...on higher education, culture, public library, and the women's affairs. And on behalf of the chairperson of the committee, Speaker Juan Pat, I will conduct this confirmation hearing this afternoon. On the agenda today, we will hear the confirmation of the appointment of Ms. Rosemary Clement as a member of the KGTF PBS Board of Trustees for a term of four years. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated via hand delivery and email to all centers and all main media broadcasting outlets on August 24, 2015, to meet the five-day notice, and again on August 28, 2015, to meet the 48-hour notice requirement. Well, I would like to thank both of you for being here, and right now, I'd like to open for testimony from the public. So it's just you, Daryl, and both of you can come up. Do you have it?
No.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so we'll start with you. If you can turn on your microphone so they're read, and we'll start with Mr. Taggartie.
Good afternoon, Senator Underwood. I'm happy to see you here, happy to be here. I'm here in support of the governor's appointment of Mrs. Rosemary Clement to the PBS Guam Board of Trustees. She and I have been in conversation about public media for as long as I've known her, and I was very happy to see that she was appointed to my board. I'm looking forward to her serving. She has, she is a very concerned citizen of the community and dedicated educator, and I think that she is extremely well-qualified to lend her sensibility and sensitivities to deliberations on the Board of Trustees. And so I ask for favorable consideration for her appointment by this committee and also by the legislature. And I would like, I'll answer any questions you may have about PBS Guam that you may have, but thank you very much.
I've been a resident of Guam for almost 31 years, and I am a lifetime educator and a lifetime supporter of public television since 1970. And I'm very honored to have been chosen to be on the board, and I am really devoted to public media, and I hope that I can help Daryl and the rest of the board make the right decisions and do, make some innovations and whatever.
I just have a few questions here, and let's start with the first one. You know, Sesame Street is probably known by most of us as a KGTF or now PBS staple in its programming. It has now evolved over the years to other children's shows such as Cat in the Hat, Curious George, and others. How do you think these shows help a child's development and growth?
Well, those, those two shows you mentioned are based on very well-known children's books and series of books, and they just have some sort of cachet that children really love, and I think having it on television is just another way of reinforcing reading the books, which of course, that's my, you know, goal, is to get kids to read.
Importance of reading.
Yeah.
Well, we have some families who do not have television, and how can PBS Guam help children in these families take advantage of programs that you offer?
The, the market for broadcast television is rapidly changing, especially since the rollout of 4G LTE devices. And so we're finding that there's a great migration to broadband delivery compared to the usual broadcast delivery. However, with our numbers indicate that, that about half of the households on Guam don't have cable or digital television delivery. We do have a, an avid broadcast market, share of the broadcast market. We are, when, when we have problems with our transmitter, we get calls. People are, are, they want the children's programming, they want the evening programming, and so we're making inroads. But we're finding also that the programs that we carry from the network are available to households on Guam through broadband, and many people are accessing those programs through broadband. A great shift in, as you know from the history of, of broadcast television, just as ABC, NBC, CBS have ceased to be the big, the biggest in the market, PBS is now having that same kind of, of a, of an impact on it. It's moving more into broadband. We're maintaining our transmitter, but we're finding that, that we have to send, we have to boost our visibility in broadband. And PBS Kids is the single largest site for children in the United States with over 38% of the market. The total, of total use, anytime a child goes online, over one-third of the time they go online, they go to PBS Kids, a single site. And so we're very optimistic about the future of the brand, and then we have our individual challenges here with our, with our local market. I am, I have made an overture to the Northern Mariana, Mariana Islands to extend our broadcast services into the CNMI. That is the last area of the United States not served by public television.
Wow.
And so we're very sensitive to this, and we know that we need to be nimble and not rest on our laurels. In fact, you may have missed this in the news over the past two weeks. Sesame Street Productions has signed an agreement with HBO, and so now they're going to become an HBO-branded program and no longer an anchor that was exclusive to PBS Network.
Wow.
And our reaction to this is that it's a good thing that, that commercial television is turning to high-quality educational products that are based on research and, and are full of, of solid values and respect and, and the, what you find in the content for children's programming on PBS, that, that these shows are being picked up and, and used in the, in the commercial networks. Similarly, here on Guam, Nihi, a local production which is based on PBS-style children's programming, is on the commercial channels, and we welcome this because the children who are, who are watching those other channels deserve to have high-quality programming.
Very good.
And so we're all for this.
So I am too. Because, so you're not just accessing HBO for those other, like movies, and most of them are not children-appropriate, but we do give our families the option.
Yes.
I think that's, that's great. Well, one of the commitments of PBS Guam is to provide educational assistance to teachers and, and the classroom. So one of the programs in PBS Guam website is the PBS Learning Media. And so are you aware, you're aware of this website? Have you ever used it?
I, I was thinking when you were asking Daryl questions, I have been teaching part-time at the adult education at GCC, and several of the courses I've taught have videos with them, with the reading part of it, and they're PBS programs, and they are excellent. I wish that was something that we could do here, where teachers are in basically low-income neighborhoods. I think most of them were made in Philadelphia.
Yeah.
And they go in and have teachers reading, you know, exciting literature to people who have not, don't have the background for it, which is very similar to the people that I have at GED, in GED Now, and getting them excited, and that's a PBS program. And I would love to see us to be able to do something like that in Guam.
But I believe that at one time, we actually had, where, this started out, my husband, Robert, a long time ago, he was teaching history of Guam, and it was through KGTF, and they had him live, right?
Yeah.
And he was, and then it was broadcast, and so that was how teachers took the class. So it was kind of like an advance. I don't know if they had gotten credit, but he did teach through, this was, at the time, it was KGTF.
Yeah, we have a, PBS Learning Media is positioning itself nationwide to become the largest single repository of, of, of learning aids, teaching aids, available to the classrooms. I've actually transferred one of my employees from grants only, to concentrate only on education and building the bridge to educators here on Guam and promoting these, these services. So we're participating in, in the various get-togethers and in the field to promote our products and to get teachers to sign up for this. It's free, it's available, and we, these are, these are available, actually, when, as the classrooms become connected by broadband.
Yes.
Teachers will be able to call these materials up.
And then broadcast it.
And use them. Well, no, use them in the classroom.
In the classroom, yeah.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
So these are available, these are services that are available right now through, through PBS, and we're promoting it locally.
Okay, so another question is that, you know, over the years, PBS has done tremendous job in expanding its viewing audience with PBS NewsHour, we have that, and Charlie Rose, Austin Wimmels, Frontline, and of course, the biggest hit with Downtown Abbey. So as a trustee member, what would you do to advocate to keep these programs and, and others on the air on Guam?
What would I do? I don't know if that's a little bit beyond my abilities, but no, I mean, I think, I think that KGTF needs to have more publicity, and one thing, I, I think, people don't know sometimes when things are on, or you hardly ever know when anything's on because they don't have any kind of TV guide, but I know they have their schedule in the Marianas Variety, and, which I think is through trade, bargaining, bartering. I wish that they had more publicity, if they could be in the PBN, which is the, more or less, the newspaper of record, and I think more people would be watching these political shows if they knew when they were on and we could advertise them more.
Yeah, and so they, you actually, you actually have these shows sponsored, right, by local, by local companies?
Yes, yes, they are sponsored locally.
Right, so perhaps one of the ways by which members can, can encourage for these to be sponsored would be to, to encourage those, you know, more companies to.
Yes.
To support these shows.
Yeah, we're, we have a challenge because we've got, we're fighting against how many other channels.
Yes.
Cable, cable and GTA both have tens of channels.
Right.
I don't know how many channels, I don't know, there's so many channels to choose from. Also, we are competing with broadband delivery, as I've mentioned before, and so people are turning more to a, a two-way dialogue with their, with what they choose to, for entertainment. Even programs such as Downtown Abbey and Charlie Rose, they can, they can be accessed directly. Our challenge is.
That's right.
Yeah, we, our challenge is actually to make our broadcast system more relevant, and to do this, we are actually opening a second channel. It's been in testing over the air for, for about six months, and GTA is ready to roll it out on, on, on the channel fifteen, sixteen, and last week, we made a contact with DOCOMO to ask them once again to, to add it to their channel 116. And this will be all local shows, and, and this would create a relevance.
Oh, so you're going to have a separate, a separate channel, per no show.
Yes, a second, a second channel.
Okay, then, second channel.
Yeah, the transmitter actually is capable of, of transmitting four channels, and so we only have one channel worth of feeds from the states. We don't, in the states, all the stations get four feeds, four separate channel feeds, and here, we only get one, and so we've not expanded to the second channel, but we will start with using our archives and developing local shows, and through that, promote our network shows and other, and other services that we will provide as a, as an, as an agency.
So when you're talking about broadband, and help me understand this, if I had an iPad or my granddaughter had an iPad, she can actually access some of the shows that you have?
Yes.
By guess, you know, through Google and going to your website?
That's right. Two-thirds of our network shows are children's, and PBS Kids is the largest kid's site in the nation, and, and that's where many, many families are turning their, their children's attention to these worthwhile programs by, by letting them access through tablets and, and Androids and iPhones and whatnot. So I don't think that we're losing audience because we've carried the brand, but we do have to develop local products that are relevant.
Right.
Not only to us in this community, but also to our relatives and friends who are residing in the states.
Right, very good.
And so that's what we're working on now, and we think that we'll get more revenue from that than we will by trying to appeal to local businesses to support the network shows on a, on a broadcast channel that's competing with cable.
Right.
And GTA digital TV and sorson and, yeah.
Got it. So turning to Mrs. Clement, your, your background seems to focus, well, of course, your background is education, so working for DOE and GCC. With your experience, what do you want? How can you contribute to, as a member of the trustees?
Well, I'm, I'm hoping that we can get some more programs involving local people and Outer Island people that I think are quite disenfranchised in many ways, and those are some of the people that I've met at, in the GED program. I mean, they're not the majority, but there are some, and I think they're, I think that that would be some way that we can get local programming and also for, for children. I mean, one thing I would also like to add about how I've been involved with PBS when I was teaching Gifted Elementary, is that they have their own Read-a-Thon, and my students participate in that, and that, that's very successful. And I think maybe we can do something with some of the, the books that are coming out now by local people, and I don't know, we have like a Reading Rainbow that's based on some local, locally-written things, and I think that would be, be really good and helpful.
You have, you have shared what, I think those might be your priorities that you want to add. Would you like to add anything else to your set of priorities as, you know, as a member of the trustee?
Well, I certainly like to help them with their fundraising. For many years, they had a wine tasting that I think has not, well, I guess you've had it, but not, it hasn't been such a big thing, but for years, it was one of the big social events. I think they had them a lot at Top of the Mar, and, and I still have these wine glasses that say KGTF on them, and I think that, you know, like other nonprofits which I've been involved in and my husband has been involved in, you know, one, one big event can really help publicity getting, getting money, obviously, but getting more people involved, and I, that's something else that I'm interested in. When I first came to Guam, I don't think I was here a week, and I went to KGTF to volunteer, and I did some volunteer work for that. You remember the man, the Asian man?
The Asian man.
Yeah, I mean, that's a long time ago, but that's one of the, before I started working again, that's the first thing I did was to come here, so I'm, I'm really interested in, in many aspects, but I think fundraising, publicity, and getting into the local, the local population more.
Well, I'd like to acknowledge Senator Frank Augen. They were in a briefing regarding the Record of Decision, so I just want to acknowledge his presence here. I, I only have one more question, and actually, it has to do with the fiscal year budget. For PBS Guam, increase from the previous fiscal year was $611,826, and now it's $624,633, at least what we are proposing. How can you, as a trustee, provide guidance? And we have our Madam Chair here to PBS as it relates to their operational budget.
About the budget?
Yes.
I'm afraid I, that's nothing, I, I really don't much about it. I think Daryl could probably answer something about the budget. I, I hope they get more money, that's for sure.
Okay, yeah. And we have Speaker Juan Pat, who's here in this.
Hi, Senator.
Thank you for the, for the inquiry about our budget. The budget that the legislature provides to PBS Guam annually is for certain positions only. They're delineated in the staffing pattern, and that's it. The rest of the money, we have to raise by grant and by private activities, and that's written into our charter, and it is also written into our, it's also a requirement of our grant. Our grant requires that we raise money in other areas besides the grant, and the government of Guam law is very strict in that it only funds certain aspects, having to do with the essentials of the administration, engineer, cameraman, and the rest have to be funded by, other positions have to be funded by the grant or by private funds. And so the increase from last year is simply reflecting the haystack, and, and then there's no wiggle room on that, so.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Senator, for conducting this confirmation hearing. We had just finished with the military Record of Decision meeting with the, with the Admiral and some of the other members, so I had asked, you know, my vice chair, she would, you know, do this on my behalf, so thank you very much, and I apologize to you as well. Rosemary, I've known you for so many years, of course, in the school system, and I know your, your work habits and how, not just you, but even your, your family members, your husband and your son have contributed, of course, you know, towards the advancement of, you know, the, the community and the culture, so I appreciate that, and, you know, I know obviously you are, but we have time to be able to assist, you know, of course, KGTF, I mean, they need a lot of, a lot of work.
The main reason I retired, when I retired, aside from the paperwork and DOE, which has gotten out of control, I have six grandchildren now, and at the time, I had four, and you know, my, my son is at the university, he's very busy, my daughter just had another baby, so I spend a lot of time babysitting, and I am teaching one course at GCC in the GED program, which we just started again, and I, I love that. I mean, it's, it's quite a departure from Gifted Elementary, but I, I've found many of these young people are actually gifted, and they just fell through the cracks, so I, I just, you know, I'm just a born teacher, but I do have the time. I mean, I just, I have, because I'm not, that's only, I'm only working a few hours a week, actually, aside, aside from the babysitting, so.
And you are familiar, though, with, you know, of course, the, the mission of, you know, public broadcasting, KGTF, and, and, do you have any ideas in terms of, you know, how then maybe you can help in terms of, you know, helping it to advance, helping it in terms of, you know, for us racing, you know, some money?
Well, we, we did talk a little bit about that, about more, you know, more fundraising, and I'm concerned with making more contact with minority people in Guam, and, well, well, all the young people in Guam, because I think they don't, we don't have enough contact with them, and they are, unfortunately, from my experience in adult education, people that we should be reaching are texting their friends, and, I mean, their, their, their life is, is very narrow, and I think that, that public television is some way that we can open up, if we can get them, you know, in the fold. So those are, those are my concerns.
I'm happy to hear that because I don't know whether we're just old-school, but, you know, I, I really like public, you know, first, you know, education, public broadcasting, more than just, like you say, limiting ourselves to just with, you know, mobile, you know, phones, and we, we learn how to communicate, you know.
I know.
And socialize, you see, with others, and I'm hoping too, that, you know, more of these kind of programs would become more culturally related also and.
Yes.
And up-to-date also in terms of, you know, providing, you know, more awareness, you know, to our youth, you know, about even sometimes the, the negative effects of, you know, some of those, you know, technologies that, that they use. And I, and I say this, and I joke about it too, because like, you know, when we have family dinners at night, right, once a week, and then everybody comes to the table with their phones, and my rule is, you know, it all, you park it elsewhere, and you come to the table.
It's the bane of my existence.
And we learn instead of.
I'm like, why do these people go out for dinner? I mean, they just stay home and sit in the corner. I know, I know. I think, I, I think we have to foot a way to, to reach out to young people and broaden their horizons, and I think that they, I'm always telling them, you know, you, first of all, I have absolutely no cellphones in my classroom. I said, "You're here to learn and to communicate with people face-to-face," and I said, "You know, how do you think people ever survive without these cellphones?" You know? So I'm, I'm with you 100% on that, and I think if you get.
Are you also looking at some of the ladies, not so much trends, but, you know, some educational programs that are, you know, starting to capture, you know, our, our school children and, but actually televising it, putting it in your program? One example that, you know, was really very popular, and I decided to see already that they kind of got burned out, I suppose, with this, like a poetry slam that they were doing in the schools, and there's so many kids who want to participate, but because time was limited, space was limited, that is something, you know, like the, I'm, I'm being old-school again to, you know, remember the day where we have a talent show, right, and people come, but then these are something for the younger people who can express themselves, who really have very little options, I guess, or don't know how to express themselves, and they're finding that now through, of course, rap and poetry, you know, things of that nature. Do you see anything like that in terms of reaching out to, to, to our kids, that we can take some of the things that maybe could have been negative and turn into something more positive?
Well, you mean maybe a, a show with young people doing things like reading poetry, rapping, and I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know with any, you know.
It's actually something, it's actually something that I've been working on since I came into this position. What we're finding is that with the start of our second channel, I put out since last June, a year ago, a call for would-be producers and would-be independent producers, or those who have already produced something. Maybe they're producing for YouTube, they're just producing, you know, to shoot for each other on the handheld devices. The, the new technology that's now in everyone's hands is not only a competition for broadcast, but it's also a, a, a democratization of the means of producing video and audio. So people who aspire to do more than simply put a camera in front and do a selfie, they want to communicate with, in a broader sense, they're doing it with YouTube because they don't know that they have the option of coming to public television, and they're shooting in a different format. We have to modernize our equipment and, and accept these, these submissions of I've been putting out a call, I've actually, I've actually approached the Consul General for the FSM and gave him a blank invitation for each of the ethnic groups from Micronesia, that they can come on and do their own shows in their own languages and have their own people coming in to do the production work. We'll train them on our equipment, A to Z, red carpet treatment, we'll train. We can't pay, because we don't have a budget for buying these products.
But you'll be able to give them time, though?
Yes, we will do, it's a public facility, it's an educational facility, and if we have people who have a creative bent, they have creative products, we want to be their first venue of choice. We're also offering to put these on the PBS national site, because even PBS is recognizing, since last year, the annual meeting theme was "Think Local." Now, my reaction was, I'd only been on the job for four, five months, was, "How dare they tell me to think local? I am thinking local." And when I got there, I found that the ideas that I'd already been cooking locally to set the direction for the station was exactly what they were trying to get all of the general managers to do, was to pay more attention to the needs of the community, because the network programming was going to shift to more of a broadband distribution, and that we should be shooting more local video and having more locally hosted shows, and then putting them, hosting them on the national website for our products to be viewed nationwide by people who used to live on Guam. And this is actually a tripling, quadrupling of our audience. Instead of seeing a smaller audience, a shrinking audience because of our broadcast, reliance on broadcast, we can tap a larger audience by serving our community effectively and getting the products out through broadband. And so that is something that we need to raise the money for. It's, it's to expand our equipment and expand our training and, and access, access the technical means to give voice to these different groups locally. And so this is all part of, actually, it's all part of the briefing I have to give, so. But we are, we, our second channel is, right now, broadcast over there on 26.2, and we're, we have some thousands of dollars more of equipment, but we're seeking a commitment from DOCOMO to carry us on channel 116. We already have a commitment from GTA to add us to channel 16, and their equipment's already installed. What we're lacking is an ability to go from a file-based system to broadcast, because, and actually, we have a fully staffed master control office, so that we have people running it manually. It's automated, but we have positions which watch the automation 18 hours a day. They can actually manually switch, because the equipment's still there, and so we just have to have a way to drop files, which is the modern way of, of producing shows, drop those files into a server so they can be, they can be brought up with switching equipment.
Thank you, and I love that I had, as a matter of fact, because of my involvement in the Association of Pacific Island Legislatures, there's a lot of talk, of course, in terms of how do we help do some type of orientation for, you know, their, their families who are migrating to Guam, and they come here knowing nothing, never even been exposed to sometimes, you know, the infrastructure that we have.
Yes.
And so some of the things that is very difficult for them to do, you know, some tried and then stopped, but one of the things that was suggested, and, and maybe that's something I think we can have a conversation on and continue it is also the leadership that throughout Micronesia, is that maybe through, like you say, this program, is that an individual will come in, you know, one island per, per day, and they would provide all kinds of information, like where to go, what to do, how to prepare, you know, for school, you know, things of that nature, answer some of their questions. I, there was a program that actually this, that was running even in Saipan, it no longer was happening, but the woman was an attorney, and her husband was in broadcasting, and the two were doing this, and Carolynian, of course, and, and some other, invited others in, and they, they found it to be really very helpful, and I know that in my discussion with the courts, when they wanted to have interpreters for the different languages for individuals who, who come to their courts, that the whole idea was to find somebody in the community who is, of course, always fluent and understands, they've been here, you know, a while, and, and can provide that type of orientation as well. So I think this will be really one that can be so helpful, I think, for, for everyone, you know, not just us here, but for those themselves who are coming to the islands. I'd like to take that conversation a little bit further with you, and then possibly even bring it up to the next board meeting that's going to take place in December with all of the legislators, and then later, the governors and the presidents will be meeting, that this might be something that they may want to also consider, and who knows, maybe for them, for just a, a certain amount of money to, like you say, at least to get it from file to broadcast, what would that cost be that maybe they themselves in their local governments can appropriate to do just that for their programs, for their, you know, their, their people?
Well, it, it actually can take place right now. We can start the production of these programs immediately. I, there is a volunteer at, at the station, he also volunteers for public radio, who was an experienced videographer for the Chuk State government for 17 years, and he is now going through the community and seeking people to come out and produce these shows. We have professionals who are in the field, who are working in various places throughout the government, who are being approached to, from the Micronesian community, to, they're, they're providing these services on a, basically on an emergency basis, or clinical basis, but we need to have them come out and produce shows where they can do prevention or to do orientation on a, in advance, so you don't have the kinds of disorientation of, of people as they move into the community. These, these are all overtures I've started over the last year, and just trying to get people to come out from behind the structures within their own communities, within, because it's, we have, just in, for Chuk State, it's not the same for the, the people in the Outer Islands as the people in the Chuk Center. They, there's a different procedure, they have their own elders in the community to respect, and if the elders are not coming out to do it, then, then that, that whole thing has to be negotiated, and that's happening now, and I've asked every group in Micronesia to do this. We were actually, we, we spent time at the Guam-Micronesia Island Fair, set up a booth for no other reason than to just go out and keep talking to these groups that were, that were present, and that's how, that's the outreach that we're doing now. Also, you may recall from my confirmation hearing a year ago, that I brought up a, a resolution that I drafted and put through three years ago, two and a half, three years ago, to the Chief Executives Conference, and that was for a Micronesia-wide radio network that would be anchored on Guam and corresponding with the, the radio stations in the, in the various centers. And that was also set up, that was also predicated on this idea that we could be producing shows here on Guam. That would be interesting, in the vernacular languages of Micronesia, that would be interesting to address some of the, of the issues of migration and, and the aspirations of people to get ahead.
I'm going to ask you to, to remember then in November, because you're going, you're going to, you're going to remember this, is to pull that resolution out, so we can update it and then to be presented in the December APIL and NISIS, I saw it moving.
Okay, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And, you know, and, yeah, another question, I'm sorry. I really want to thank you, Rosemary, for agreeing to be able to, to help, and your sister, of course.
It's an honor to me.
Thank you, and, you know, for, for your support, being here to support. I am going to call session tomorrow, so that means my staff is going to work overnight to get this ready, and not going to give 10-day notice for other people to submit any testimonies. I think both the fact that you're willing and he's also accepting, I want to report you out tomorrow for session this week and confirm you.
Thank you so much.
I want to thank you so very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so I guess we would just have to, thank you, Speaker, and as I had noted, Speaker was with the adult care briefing. So there being no individuals to present this confirmation hearing and appointment of Mrs. Rosemary Clement as a member of, to the KGTF PBS Guam Board of Trustees is now concluded, and so the public hearing is adjourned. The time now is 3:241. Thank you.
Thank you.